Before we open the meeting, I would just like to take a moment to recognize the individuals from Helping Hand. It was put together by-
Many Hands Project.
Many, I'm sorry, Many Hands Project. And Commissioner McDowell responded with this group to help fill sandbags for a lot of the flooding that was going on in Newport Township. And it was called at the last minute and this group was there and volunteered to help their neighbors out. And I think it's one of the wonderful things about our community that we have people here that will respond when, not only when things are going good, but when things are going bad for different individuals in our community. So, we want to recognize them. And we have Naomi Driver, Samuel Rocha, and Nathan Statler. And Naomi Driver is going to open the meeting.
Make sure you get to pick up that gavel.
Hit it, Harv.
I want to call this meeting of Zion City Council to order.
I want to call this meeting of Zion City Council to order.
Do you say, "Come on up here and you say, 'Please call the roll.'"
Did I have to thank the hammer?
No, you don't get to thank the hammer. The hammer was.
I want to go ahead. Clerk, please call the roll.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner McKinney?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Detteen?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
You have to ask everybody to stand up and join me in the project.
So, can everybody stand up and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. And thank you for your help in the community. It's greatly appreciated.
Mayor, now I'll just add a few words of-
Please do.
... what the students did this last week. So, we had about 80 students and adult sponsors going throughout the community, about 35 homes in the Zion area with home improvement type projects, some as minor as weeding, some cutting down trees, some minor home repairs and things like that. But then we got the storm on Wednesday and that kind of changed our plans. We weren't able to work outside, but we did realize that there were a lot of people that had experienced some damage in their homes, flooded basements, so we kind of switched gears. And we received calls from residents here in the community and we went out and helped them clean out basements. And then, as Mayor Hill stated, we did get a call from Newport Township asking for assistance to do some filling of sandbags for the flooding in Newport and other areas. So, we sent a crew over to help do sandbagging. And it was a great week. This is the seventh year the Many Hands Project has been operating in Zion. It was organized and planned by Christ Community Church and Village Church of Gurnee with the help of other churches in town. Memorial United Methodist provided food. Grace Missionary Church provided breakfast every morning. Zion Missionary Baptist provided dinner for this crew all week long. So, it was a great week and I really appreciate the work these students did.
Anybody else? Yes, thank you very much. We truly do appreciate all that you're doing, so keep it up. Next, William Williamson is going to come up to the podium.
And he was one of our students that was out there working too.
All right. Let's pray. Dear God, I thank you for this beautiful day that you have blessed us with. And I thank you for the health that you have blessed us all with to be able to be here tonight. I thank you for the city of Zion and that you have continued to bless our city. I thank you for everyone who was involved in the Many Hands Project, all of the volunteers and all of the people who served them. And I praise you for the outcome of the Many Hands Project, that we are able to spread your love throughout the community by serving those who needed help. I pray that you will bless this evening and this meeting and help us all to want to become more like your son. In Jesus' name, amen.
Item number four is agenda changes. Do any of the commissioners have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Some moved.
Have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Detteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
At this time, we have a, we've scheduled a public hearing for the appropriation ordinance. And I'm, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Some moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Detteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Director Nabel. You open or discuss the appropriation ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor Fisher. The appropriation ordinance is required to be adopted every year. It's basically our legal authority to spend money. We adopt the budget internally, which is actually more conservative than the appropriation ordinance because that's our, that's our internal guide of how we're going to spend the funds and where they're going to come from. But this allows us, in the case of, let's say, emergencies come up that aren't part of the, that aren't part of the planned budget, or let's say we get grants and we have a matching portion, that allows us to go, this allows us to go over that budget through council approval, probably of those items at the time, without having to basically go back and get legal authority to spend that so we can, we can work in the, in the moment. So, there's, there's items in here that are increased, again, for disaster recovery, for, you know, if there's additional personnel, for payroll taxes, things like that over what we budget. But the total appropriation for all funds of the city of Zion is $48,172,952. And again, that's all funds, general fund, water and sewer fund being the biggest of those, but that's across the entire city, the total appropriated amount that I'm recommending for appropriate.
And could you explain what the total amount that we have budgeted in comparison to the appropriation ordinance?
I believe it's about six, six and a half million less. I don't have the exact number, but I think it's around 42 million, again, citywide.
David, if somebody wanted to inspect the appropriation ordinance, how would they get a copy of it?
It's actually on file with the clerk for viewing.
Okay.
And I believe that was published, whatever the requirement was for that, to be available for viewing.
Does anyone in the public have anything they'd like to say about the appropriation ordinance?
So, 6 million or 6 to 8 million if you're asking for a budget for this?
What we, the difference between a budget and the appropriation ordinance, and correct me if I'm wrong, the budget is what we have decided that we're going to spend this year. And that's 40, $42 million. It's all of our debt payments and everything. The appropriation ordinance is the amount that we would be able to appropriate, 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 if there is an emergency of some type, if tornado came through town or there were some disasters. So, we have to appropriate that money, but it's, will not be, that's not what's going to be on your taxes. Our levy is what will, what will show up on the taxes. And our levy was how much, David? 6.2 million dollars is what's on the levy. The rest of the money that we operate the city with comes from the state or-
Fees.
Sales tax fees and all the things that we, that are other revenue sources. So, we're not spending the 48 million dollars.
Just to expound on that, again, when you, when you talk about taxes and everything, there's a revenue offset to this that typically anything that we're going to go over, something that we have in our budget, again, that's for like disaster recovery and typically there's like federal grant money that comes in to offset that. Or if there's grant funds, you know, let's say we got a grant for a large piece of equipment, we would have the revenue, but we'd also have the expense. So, we have to be authorized, we have to be able to spend that money even though we have a revenue source if there's something that came through the year that wasn't anticipated as part of the original budget. So, this just allows us that cushion if those opportunities arise or if we have to, to be able to spend more than the approved budget.
Do you foresee anything that you need to spend that money on, correctly?
No. I mean, the budget is what our anticipated expenditures are.
And the appropriation ordinance in relationship to the budget has been the same thing, well, since for the last five years. And we've, we've never gone over the budget amount and gone up to the appropriation ordinance. Are there any other questions? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some moved.
A motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Detteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number six is special presentations from Bellas Bistro Market. And the commissioners have a packet in front of you and an explanation of what Bellas would like to do. This is a little different ordinarily. They would be coming to the liquor commission for a liquor license. And I am just, at this point, I would appreciate getting the input from the rest of the city council. I have expressed this to the gentleman from Bella, that one of the things that I'm fear is that this is a backdoor way of getting gaming into the community because once he has a liquor license, he can, he can get gaming. But I will let him explain what he would like to do. And I guess I would like to get at least some type of an idea from the council, what your feeling is. And then, based on that, we would deal with that at the, at the liquor commission. So, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to come today. Anybody need a packet? I have more.
I do. Thank you.
Mona, do you have, do you have a packet?
I have one, please. My name is Rocky Bella. I have an office in Bloomington in Springfield. I live in South Barrington. And I'm originally in the gasoline and liquor store business and I evolved to restaurants in Southern Illinois. So, when I moved to South Barrington, my wife and her friends always go to Cooper's Hawk every week and join the wine memberships. And every time I'd go there, it was pretty expensive and it wasn't really affordable. So, my father works at Botaglia, which is one of the largest Italian distribution. They do Luminati's and Giordano's and beggars pizza on the south side. So, I created a concept two years ago that we have a market, which is all like Italian groceries, Italian novelties. And we also have a full menu, which is Italian deli where we serve breakfast, lunch, dinner. Whatever we sell, we make it right there, right then and there, right in front of you. If you guys go to Italy in Chicago, they have all the meats and cheeses hanging and you can pick what you want and they slice it up and they make you a nice sandwich or they could sell it to you to go. So, the reason this concept was created is I wanted to bring this market, instead of going to Hinsdale or Naperville, go to markets that don't have this concept and make it more affordable. Where people, we sell Italian bottles of wine. Everything's Italian. Tenasi is the main brand that we carry. So, my buying power's great. I get bottles of wine for four to five bucks a bottle. I sell them for seven bucks because we want to raise volume and we want to keep our prices affordable. So, everything we sell is affordable, our food's affordable. I have a lease on Sheridan Road. I believe it's, don't quote me, I think it's about 2,400 square feet. I'm currently building in Bensonville in 4,500 square feet. And I should be done with the construction probably in two months. I'm done in Round Lake Beach. I'm waiting, I'm waiting to open. I built about 3,000 square feet. So, I'm not a gaming parlor. I'm not going in 1,200 square feet. I'm spending a lot of money with this concept. The reason I do want gaming is because I have it in all my restaurants. It's ancillary. Illinois allows it. It, it helps us keep the bills low, it helps us pay the rent, but that's not our main focus. In my opinion, a town like Bensonville doesn't allow gaming parlors. But when I told I'm building 5,000, almost 5,000 square feet, they saw what I was about to do here. So, my request to you guys, why I like Zion is north because I got Bensonville in the middle, I got Zion on the north, and I want to have Round Lake Beach out to the northwest. And my family friend owns a gas station here, so I helped him in operations. So, I saw the customer base, there's a lot of customers that would love this concept. And the gentleman that owns a strip mall is a colleague of mine. So, I approached him and I signed the lease. I met the mayor, he was very open to me. He told me, "Come to the council, present your ideas." We are all ages, so unlike a gaming place. You don't, if you guys go to Moretti's in Hoffman Estates or Lake in the Hills, or I don't know if there's a Moretti's out here, but Moretti's is a restaurant. They have machines. Our machines are 250 square feet. They're in the back, they're gated off, kids cannot get into them. They have full surveillance. It's behind the bar or to the side of the bar. But our main things, we have about 30 to 50 seats, including the bar. We have a full blown, you walk in, you're going to see groceries and wine bottles and a full bar of the open kitchen. So, my request is before I go apply for liquor license and I jump through all the hoops, I want to get your ideas and get your feedback on this. And if you guys like this, I'd love to come to Zion and open one up.
Where are these pictures from?
That's Bensonville.
And what, what, where are you going to locate this?
I told Signolito the address. It's, there's a strip mall on Sheridan Road. There's a grocery store kitty corner to it. And there's three vacancies and there's the Dollar General. I think I have about 2,400 square feet. I got the corner unit. I can, I can email you guys the-
Are you at, are you at Family, across the street from Family Video?
Yes, I'm across the street, on Sheridan Road, yes.
There's not a grocery store there, though.
No, if you go like around the corner, there's-
Oh, okay, you got Piggly Wiggly.
Yeah, yeah.
Piggly Wiggly, okay. So, you're on that corner.
Yes, yes.
It's one of those buildings down there.
There you go.
So, part of your business plan is to include gaming?
Well, that's ancillary. It's because the state of Illinois allows it. But I'm, I'm open with you guys about it. We're all ages, we're not a parlor, you're not going to see, you're not going to see what you see-
What classes are you applying for? Do you-
I thought there was a restriction on the licenses for gaming.
We don't, we don't have a, we don't have a license that would fit what he wants to do. Let me, I want to be sure that I understand exactly what you want to do. You're talking about having grocery store and carry out-
Yes.
-non-opened wine.
Just wine bottles, I want it to go license.
Are you going to do any other alcohol?
No, just wine.
Are you going to do any beer? Are you going to do any-
Craft beers for on-premise, not to go.
But you also want to do on-premise-
Yes.
-consumption.
On-premise, off-premise, that's my main two licenses that I need.
Okay. And right now, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have a license that, we don't have a liquor license that addresses sales that are removed and consumed off-premise and at the same time, a on-premise consumption-
Because it's not really a grocery store, it's kind of a restaurant.
No, it's a market. It's a market. It's like, have you guys been to Cooper's Hawk, by any chance?
My, my point, Commissioner, is that we don't have one that does both. We, you can get carry out at the grocery stores and you can consume in a restaurant, but we don't have a liquor license that allows you to carry out and consume on restaurant. So, if, if, depending on what the discussion is today, we would have to adopt a new classification for a liquor license, if that's what we chose to do. And I guess my, I've got a, go ahead. You guys go first. I've got a bunch of questions that I want to ask, too.
Well, I, I'm not in favor of adding additional gaming to our city, so that's where I would stand on it.
Okay, I understand. My whole, my whole thing is I want to bring-
You want to have, present a business model that is, you know, this is kind of a store. This looks really nice, actually.
That's what I was going to create. Commissioner, as a businessman, my rent's high, my build-out's about $250,000. So, I want to make sure that it can cover any revenue it can cover possibly. But we are all ages. We are going to be completely family oriented. Because pizza restaurants, and I'm from Schaumburg area, in Hoffman Estates where I go with my son, the ice cream parlors, they have, some of them have rooms in the back. But we don't do that well in gaming because we're, we're more of a restaurant.
Yeah, then cut it out of your business plan.
Huh?
If you don't do that well with it, cut it out of your business-
Well, you know what, if it covers my rent, it's a big help to keep my prices lower. And I'm being honest with you guys, right? $2,000 a month isn't a lot in the bigger picture, but it helps with that location for revenue, right? It just helps out and a rent gets partially covered. And I want to sell a lot of market groceries, Italian stuff and wine bottles to go. I want to create a wine membership like Cooper's Hawk has it. So, I'm kind of mimicking them, but making it just the bistro side.
Yeah, I'm just telling you what I think.
No, no, I understand, I'm just, I respect your feelings on that. That's why I came here to talk to you guys about it and get some feedback. But this, it would raise a lot of revenue in your town and it would be beautiful, the way people, just like those pictures.
Yeah, these pictures are nice.
Are there any other questions?
So, the only way you would come is if we, if we created a special liquor license that allowed for a grocery-type packaged liquor sales restaurant that allowed gaming, which we'd have to create a special license for that? That's the only way you would come?
No, we'd have to create a special license that would fit the market and the bistro, the onsite consumption and the carry out.
Oh, all right. And gaming would just happen?
Gaming, gaming would happen and you would have no authority over that because under Illinois law, if he had the liquor license, then if he met the state requirements, the city has the authority to create the licenses, but you can't say without gaming, per se, because there's a lot of establishments in town that by virtue of their gaming, or excuse me, by virtue of their liquor license, they went and got gaming through the state and the city had really no authority other than to charge the $25 per terminal fee.
Yeah. And currently, all of our liquor licenses are used, are being utilized.
We don't have one that would fit his business plan.
But even if we did, I mean, all of our current liquor licenses are already-
In use?
We did that, we did that last month.
Yeah, because we reduced some of the liquor licenses.
We reduced some of them last month. All of our liquor licenses right now are in use.
Yeah.
And our policy, or it's not written policy, but what we do is when a license goes vacant, as soon as we can, we pull a license off the, off the table. So, all of our licenses right now are used.
Correct, yes.
And the, the, what, we would have to establish a new category of license because of the takeout and the on-premise consumption.
Yes.
Yes. And you would only be selling, on your on-premise consumption, you would only be selling wine? And craft beer.
And craft beer.
And to go-
And how do you define craft beer?
Well, mostly IPAs. Like Peroni's is not a craft beer, but people love them. So, mostly higher end beers, I could say. Like in some of my locations, and I own Lincoln, Illinois. Peroni sells a lot. So, people like, for example, it's not a craft beer, but a higher end beer.
Are you going to be selling food with this as well?
Yes, I have, yes, I'm going to. I, I gave the mayor a menu.
Is that going to be required, when people come in there, they're going to have to have something to eat, so to speak, before they can be served?
They'll have a full menu. I gave the mayor the copy of the menu, so you can order whatever you want off that menu. I think there's a menu. I mean, I'm being open, guys. I mean, my goal is to be honest with you guys and tell you my concept.
Yeah, and I truly do appreciate that because you're very open with me when, when we met. I've got a, do you, would you object to having limits on the amount of wall space or whatever you want to call it for packaged liquor? Or a requirement that there would have to be this much market space in your facility, a percentage of it? And I, I'm looking to be sure that, we need to get it in writing, in a code, that what, if, if this would be approved, that what we approve, you will do. And then, we would have the ability to, if you did not do that, we would have the ability to pull your liquor license or whatever it would be. And I'm not, this is not, this is nothing against you, but it's just that when you're in city business long enough, often people come in when they say, "This is what we're going to do," and you give them approval to do it, and they don't come anywhere near doing it. And, and I just want to be sure that if this would happen, you would understand that we're going to tie your hands to what you say you're going to do.
I will do whatever I say, as I promised. If you guys tell me like, "I'm only selling wine bottles to go," so there's no, there's no beer to go or hard liquor to go, you can put that in writing. I do want to focus on the market, so are you guys, you guys want to limit my market or expand my market? That's the question. Market as in like decanters, wine bottles, those fancy wine glasses that tumble, like that's, that's our beauty, right? That's something that's unique that you can't really get in most places. If we want to expand on that, but are you trying to limit that part of it or do you like that part of it?
I like that part of it. I'm, I'm just saying that if, if, what I don't want to happen is that we give you approval for this and we don't, we don't tie it down, and then you open up and we walk in and you've got a section about that big over there for groceries and you got a, it's a, it's a wine liquor store, is what it is. And that's not what we're, that's not what-
You can put that in writing.
Okay.
And for me to grow as a businessman, I'm going to bring other mirrors like you to my location and show them what I have, right? So, for example, I'm not going into McHenry, but the McHenry mayor came to Round Lake Beach and he had closed the doors. And you guys can contact the McHenry mayor and he said, "This is gorgeous," because I'm already built out, I'm not open yet. He goes, "I want this in our town."
Mm-hmm.
"I'm not going to McHenry because there's not a location that suits my concept." But I want to grow, so I can't do that because it's, it's, I want to have an image that's clean and I want to be upfront with you guys. And the space I'm going in, I can't just leave it empty. I'm going to fill it up.
So, you have the corner unit, so Dollar General's on one side and you have the opposite corner?
I have the largest unit. I believe it's a corner unit. It's well over 2,000 square feet. But I would, you guys can put what you guys want to put in writing and I would, I would guarantee it.
Mayor, what's the, the process here?
Well, the process is if there's some type of a consensus that, okay, you, you're at least open to this, then he would come to the liquor commission. And at that point, that's when we would make every effort to tie him up.
Right.
Tie you down. Tie him up, tie you down. I'm sorry.
There would be a recommendation brought back to the council to creating new license classifications, setting forth specific parameters.
Right. Well, I guess I would want to see what that is. And, I mean, these are, this is a beautiful, these are beautiful graphics, but not a lot of content. So, I would want to know more about your, your business and your clientele and, you know, things like that. And then, I guess I'd want to know what, what the process would, what, what kind of license are we going to create?
If you spend a day with me, I can take you to Bensonville. I could show you our construction. You can go to Round Lake Beach if you like.
Okay.
I have an idea that you don't know how to do, but some towns have minimum seating outside of the bar. I know that just because they want to emphasize the restaurant part of it. That's an idea, but for me, the markets might push. So, I'm going to have at least, without the bar, the bar's going to have six to eight bar stools. My seating, proper seating to have a full meal, I'll have probably at least 25 to 30. So, that's my goal, based on architectural drawings that I've been creating in other locations with the size.
Okay.
And every space I have, I'm going to remark it all over the place.
Right now, our liquor license requires the gaming parlors to have 20 seats. The restaurants in a hotel to have 50 seats. And the, a regular-
Restaurant, 75.
-full-service restaurant is 75. And that's 75 seats to sit down and eat a meal comfortably. You can't put 15 seats around an eight-person table. That's not what we're, we're looking for.
Well-[1708.51]
But, so those are the things that we would be concluding.
My request to you guys is, I'm a restaurant and a market. So put 75 seats in a full-blown market, you won't be able to walk.
Right. I'm just telling you what we have right now, so...
If you guys can customize something for me, just let me know and I will do my hardest as an architect. I've got a really good architect. He'll come out, he'll present you guys an actual drawing that's going to be to that space. And you guys can put it up on the TVs. And whatever that drawing is, before you guys do hopefully approve me, that's what's going to be there. It'll be to the inch. You'll see where the market is, where the, where my tables are, where my bar is, where my equipment is. You'll see everything. So before I even try to make you guys imagine it, it'll be on blueprints and it'll be in electronic form. You can put it up on the TV. So you guys can see exactly what's going to be created.
What is the square footage of the Round Lake Beach facility?
That is 32, 33, three, a little bit more than that. It's next to Coles on Rollins Road. Right next to Sally's Beauty Supplies in Coles. I don't know if you're familiar with Round Lake Beach at all.
I know where you're talking about. Thank you.
The constructions happen, you can walk in, the door's always open. And I can meet you there if you'd like. Bensonville, if you want, Irving Park Road and Walnut is the corner. It's a huge strip mall. I'm the anchor of that big strip mall. I'm right in the middle. It's a V-shaped strip mall. I'm right in the middle. If you guys, someone's always there, but if you guys want to meet me there, I can meet you guys there.
When is Round Lake Beach due to open? Ballpark.
September. Bensonville's probably October. I hire local. So my biggest challenge always is I can bring staff from Southern Illinois, but I look for local people. Because it's better for me and better for the economy and better for, having a local manager, they know the town more and they can hire local. So I'd rather be late another month on opening and get the right staff. Everyone's Basset Train, everyone's food certified.
Mr. Mayor, if you're looking at for a feel for what the council thinks about it, I wouldn't be inclined to expand our liquor license or add gaming to the community. So that's my feeling.
I think this is a great concept, actually. And I've seen this, because I work in downtown Chicago, and I've seen even smaller spaces, very successful with this kind of, this kind of setup. So I think if we can craft, you know, the parameters for the space, I would say that if you think you can make a go of it, you know. Currently, what, you know, you currently are up and running, what kind of turnover are you getting per day on the customers?
We're getting more diamond and drinks on premise.
Right.
I'm struggling in Southern Illinois, it's a different demographic, to get my market going. But I think I've got to do more promotions, more ad in the papers, more coupons. But I'm also, I also only opened a couple of months ago.
Okay.
But, for example, in Bensonville, there's a lot of Italians and Hispanics who live behind the location. They're all excited. Because they want to buy the sauces and the pastas and the wine bottles. So I think in Bensonville, it'll do really well.
I think it's a definite selling point because you're specializing in, you know, it's, you know, certain items.
So all the town.
The shanty over in Wattsworth, you know, they bring in special food from Greece, you know, and so that's a big draw, you know. They bring in products from Greece. So specialty products, it could be a definite draw.
Any nationality, they're going to like to buy the pasta sauces and the aloe wholes and the, all the different pepperchines? It's something that everyone cooks at home.
Right.
And it's something that, the whole wine thing is really trendy, especially Italian wines like Chianti's. You know, you don't really get them every day when you go to a bar. Ours is going to be all Italian.
In one of my previous lives, I actually, I actually sold wine.
Okay.
You know, for a German winery. It was, you know, one-to-one sales. So, yeah, I know a little bit about that.
And you're okay with the gambling piece of it?
I would prefer, I think it would, it would be better if it did not have it. But I think the overall concept is, is pretty good. And I think, I think you could market it without relying on the gambling.
No, you guys are completely right, but my thing is I have investors, right, and I'm part of this company. Where I want to put something on the north side, I can't fail, right? And that, my rent being covered, it just makes a big, it gives me wiggle room to lower my prices and get more aggressive. But our gaming room, like I said, it's at the most 250 to 275 square feet. It's not going to be carousel machines when you walk in. It's going to, and it's going to be not, it's going to be all in the back tucked away. So you're not going to see it when you walk in unless you're looking for it. But it'll be, it'll be probably behind the bar or adjacent to the bar, but in the backside. Closer to the restaurants or the other side. Depends on the architect. But normally, it's not our primary visual thing when you walk in.
Commissioners?
Yes, this is a beautiful concept. I mean, it would be nice to have a restaurant in Zion that would present something like this. But thinking about the whole situation, we have a lot of little places now that have gambling and you're supposed to come in and get yourself something to eat, and then you're allowed to gamble. And if it just turns out to be a gambling place, people are so interested in this gambling, they're willing to start new businesses around it and try to convince us that that's only, like you, you said it helped you with your overhead. It's got to be more than overhead that you're making. And I'm not criticizing you. That's business. I understand it. But I'd hate to see just a gambling place set up here. If you had a nice restaurant there and you had all the rest of this that you're talking about, but the gambling part bothers me.
That's why I think the mayor wants to set parameters, I think, and that would keep us and with each other, you know, on the same page. And I would present the architectural drawings. You guys will see what I'm talking about. I think, you guys have a special use committee at all, or no? Do you guys do special use for zoning or anything like that?
We have, there are special use permits for zoning, but it wouldn't be...
There's no committee. But I would, if we proceed, I would bring in architectural conceptual drawings that would be actual, for that space.
Well, I have these fellows now that has one of these little gambling things in, a little restaurant-like. You know, you're supposed to have food, that's part of it, you know. He said, "They don't pay any attention to the food. They walk right in the door and head for the machines."
In my opinion, I have gaming in my truck stops. A true gamer is not going to be inclined to come here as much as going to an adult-only location where all you have is machines. I'm hoping to generate a lot of traffic. So a true daily habitual gamer is probably not going to come to me. But I'm going to get the mom, hopefully, this with their friends, and they're hanging out, they want to go entertain themselves and they want to drink some wine, hang out, buy some groceries.
One good thing I really like about Italian food, I think that's wonderful. But I don't know if there's that many Italians that would be coming to Zion just for that particular thing.
So...
And you say it a little earlier, people kind of come to their nationality, they're drawn by what their nationality requires.
So I have an answer to that, but I don't know if it's right. My cousin owns a lot of Jimmy John's and his best-selling sandwich is the Italian sandwich. So even in Subway, the best-selling sandwich is the Italian. So there must be a big following for Italian meats, maybe the way they taste or the way they feel, but they are their best sandwiches. I mean, for sales-wise. So we're going to sell on Toronto bread, authentic Italian sandwiches, better than Jimmy John's or Subway.
I'm open to the concept, as Commissioner Fisher talked about, with certain parameters being established. As we talked about the plan for the city, going out 25-year plan for the city, one of the things that we talked about that we felt was necessary was entertainment for adults in the community in terms of having a place to go and listen to music, having a place to go and have a glass of wine, if that's what you so choose. I happen to love Italian food. I'm not Italian, but I think here in town, what's nice, what would be nice is having some diversity and different options for places to go and spend an evening, if you so choose. The gambling component, I don't think bothers me as much. And in particular, if it draws revenue for us. That's one of the things that we've talked about when we went into the gaming, talked about the gaming earlier. But again, as everyone has stated, working and getting the parameters established, I think, is important. But I like the concept because it, to me, it exudes class. It exudes a place of warmth where you can come after a long day of work or after a golf game, a bike ride, and sit down and have a nice conversation with your friends. That's our goal.
Thank you.
My feeling is that, I guess I would like to hear in the next couple of weeks from the commissioners on what parameters they would like to see. And I just want to be sure that everybody understands that if a liquor license is granted, that we, at that point, we would have no choice about gambling. But I, and I don't mean this, I don't mean any offense here when I say this, but my feeling on gambling is that if the local government is prohibiting it, it's nanny government. Every individual in our community can make up their mind for themselves, whether they want to gamble or not. And I just think that I don't have a problem, problem with it. So I guess at this point, we need to proceed. I'll talk to the commissioners about what parameters they would like to see. And then we can sit down and go over them and then there'll be a Liquor Commission meeting scheduled and you'll be able to make your presentation to the Liquor Commission also.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Item number seven on the agenda, Citizens' Comments. First on the list is Mr. Bremner.
Mayor Hill, honorable sirs, gentle ladies, I am W.C. Bremner, 2525 ELO. I stand before you this evening, several months ago, you, after deliberate, after due deliberations, decided to eliminate the red alert system. Part of it was that you only used it three times a year to notify the city about road closings for the various celebrations. Last week, there was a water main break on 26th Street between Elizabeth and Edina at approximately 3:30 in the afternoon local time. I found out about it when my wife went to do something and we had no water. We thought perhaps the water heater in the basement broke, stampede downstairs, our pipes and water heater were intact. Some of your staff have graciously provided me with personal phone numbers. I contacted them. They took time out of their busy day to check on it and came back with the fact that there had been a water main break. A few minutes later, another phone call. They said that the break should be repaired by approximately 4:15 local time that same afternoon. Excuse me. That same afternoon. Based on the fact that we did not know what was happening and my understanding of what the original purpose of the red alert system was, I stand before you this evening to respectfully request that at the next city council meeting, oh, one August, that you place this item on the agenda for your review and reconsideration. I'm not asking that you do reconsider and put it back into operation, but that based on the fact that my understanding of it was just for this type of situation, that you at least reconsider lighting the thing off and getting it operational again. I thank you for your time, your courtesy, and your consideration of this item. Permission to stand down, sir.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Bremner, we will put it on the agenda for reconsideration. I just want to be sure that people understand that this was eliminated for budget reasons. We, it's, I think it was $14,000 a year?
$12,500.
$12,500 a year to have the system and we weren't using it. And so when we were going through the budgets, when we're talking about eliminating positions and everything else in the city, that was what was chosen to cut. And, but we will give it, it will be on the first meeting in August agenda and you'll have an opportunity to speak again then. And thank you. Carlos Smith from Zion.
How you guys doing?
Good evening.
Great, how are you?
I'm good. She's always got me talking. We're here on behalf of the Elite Striders Drill Team and Drum Corps. We do the Zion parade every year. The blue and pink girls jumping around and the guy's drumming. She's the director and I'm the drum line director. And we are taking these young kids to Baltimore this year for nationals, a national championship competition.
Yeah.
That we win all the time, by the way. And most of our kids are Zion kids. They go to Zion High School or the grammar school. And we've been practicing here for about two years, I think, in the neighborhood. And we are asking for donations, any donations that could get us to Baltimore. It takes about $10,000 to get the kids there. The bus comes up to about 6,500. And the hotels are about 40, 40, what'd you say?
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five, I'm sorry.
But we're leaving August 6th. And I did mail you a letter. So we just want to come before you guys and explain what we're doing here in the community. It's our first, you know, public meeting and, you know, and, hi, everyone. So we just, we're in need of help.
You might also want to say hello to the camera.
Hey, hey, God.
Because it'll be, it'll be on TV tomorrow, if you want to see it.
Okay, great.
The city right now, from the city's perspective, we have no money in the budget for donating. We used to donate to youth football and youth basketball and a lot of programs, and all of those have been cut. So we don't have any. I think that there are a number of people that would be willing to donate privately, myself included. And I think it would be a good idea if you would let the people know who will be tuning into this, how they can contact you, or I don't know if you have a, if there's a website for the Striders or not, and how they can make a donation from home. So...
Okay.
It's a great, it's a great thing and we truly appreciate what you're doing. And I know you, you work with David Osborne and he's a good man.
He is.
Okay, so you can donate. We have a donate PayPal. And you just go to Elite Striders, Positive Youth Organization on PayPal. We also have the P.O. Box 834 in Zion. And we are at Herman Park, 2700 29th Street, pretty much every day from 5:00 to 7:30. And...
Are you, are you a nonprofit?
We are.
Okay, so these can be deducted from?
Taxes.
Taxes, okay.
That's correct.
Great.
Absolutely.
So this is in addition to the hotel motel?
Yeah.
Tax grant that you're applying for, okay. And you also have a Facebook, Facebook page as well, I noticed on this?
Yeah, we have a Facebook page. Awesome.
If you get documentation for the 501(c)(3), they will put a "donate" button on there.
We have a donate button.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Aye, thank you. Item number eight is a consent agenda with the clerk. Please read the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on July 5th, 2017 at 7:00 PM. Approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on July 5th, 2017 at 7:52 PM. Bills, vouchers, 126801 through 126928 drawn on First Merit Bank, total $486,348.75. Receive and place on file Lake County Public Water District audit for fiscal year ending April 30th, 2017. An update to the City of Zion comprehensive plan.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So will.
Have a motion?
Second.
In a second. Is there a discussion? I would like to point out that the audit from the Lake County Public Water District sets the rate that they will sell water to the city for the upcoming fiscal year. And their rate dropped 10 cents. And so I think the council at our next meeting will put it on the agenda to pass that on or keep the rates the same, whatever you prefer. But we'll be looking to, taking the opportunity to discuss passing the 10-cent rate drop reduction onto the citizens. So we have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McTell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Consider passing resolutions as follows. 9A is resolution of commendation. Brian Feeney, 20 years of service. Brian here?
Here.
There he is. Hiding there in the back. I will read this. The City of Zion Resolution of Commendation 17R-30. Whereas Brian Feeney has completed 20 years of dedicated and loyal service to the City of Zion. And whereas, said Brian Feeney, has not only won great admiration for his service to the Zion Police Department from city officials and fellow employees, but from Zion residents whom he serves willingly and enthusiastically. And whereas, it is the desire of the city council on behalf of the citizens of this community to express sincere and profound appreciation to Brian Feeney for giving generously of his time and efforts. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Zion extends to Brian Feeney its humble expression of esteem for serving faithfully and well and extends its best wishes for continued employment, good health, success, and prosperity for many years to come. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the council and a suitable copy presented to him. Dated at Zion, Illinois, this 18th day of July, 2017. It's signed Albert Hill, Commissioner Lloyd Deteen, Commissioner Mike McDowell, Commissioner Billy McKinney, and Commissioner Christopher Fisher.
Brian? Brian, is that your son there? Is that the little guy I saw you holding in your arm?
Yeah.
Walking down the midway at the fairgrounds?
Yeah, yeah. Throw him in the weed.
That baby.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number 10, passing, consider passing ordinances as follows. 10A, making appropriations for the City of Zion fiscal year beginning May 1, 2017 and ending April 30, 2018, per Director Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Nothing really more to add from the public hearing, but to save you from going through 16 pages or 18 pages of detail, I'll just say I recommend approval of appropriation ordinance as presented.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 10B, to renew lease of the unapproved 29th Street right-of-way and unapproved city property totaling 324 square feet for additional parking, per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last year, when 1007 29th Street was purchased, it didn't meet the minimum requirements for parking. The city agreed to lease a portion of the 29th Street unapproved right-of-way. This is renewal from last year's lease.
And this is renewable every year?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 10C is regarding the disposition of surplus property per Chief Dumian. I'll turn that over to Commissioner McTell.
Mayor, in your packets is a request from Chief Dumian to declare one of our patrol vehicles as surplus. Trying to locate the request right now. Yeah. So it's 2009 Ford Crown Victoria, black and white in color, 101,660 miles on that vehicle. The maintenance costs outweigh the viability of keeping this vehicle. So I'd like to make a motion that we declare this vehicle as surplus.
And that it be transferred to the Clinton Auto Auction through disposal or disposition?
Yep. We have a motion? In a second. In a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 10D is authorizing the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue source of the city in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $3.7 million, to refund certain outstanding obligations of the city and for the payment of the expenses incidented thereto. Second reading, per Director Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. As it says, this is a second reading, we discussed it the last meeting. This authorizes us, or adoption ordinance authorizing us to go up to market for this. Item 11A is somewhat related to this. We have to approve this before we basically adopt a public hearing relating to refund. We would need a public hearing if it wasn't approved by council. But this is for refinancing of the purchase of the Ball Field property. We have a balloon payment that's coming due in a couple of years on that. We just want to wait to address that balloon payment now, so we're looking to refinance that, just go up to market and get quotes on that.
Do we need a motion?
Authorizing the issuance, yes.
Okay. Is there a motion? Yeah, I'll make a motion that we authorize the issuance of a general obligation refunding bond in the amount of $3.7 million. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 11 is discussion authorization and approval. 11A is order calling a public hearing concerning the intent of the city council of the City of Zion, Lake County, Illinois, to sell not to exceed $3.7 million general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue source, per Mayor Hill. Is there a motion to open a public hearing?
No, we're setting that, aren't we?
Oh, you're setting that?
Correct.
Oh, excuse me.
We're calling a public hearing for August 15th. Is that correct, Mayor?
Right. Okay. I mistake, I thought we... I'll make a motion that we put on the agenda, public hearing for the general obligation bonds. It's going to be August 15th? August 15th. So it's 7 o'clock.
7 o'clock. It'll be part of the regular meeting. We'll have a public hearing at that time.
Okay. We have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 11B is request approval of 2017, 2018 project year hotel motel tax grant applications, per Director Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. You have before you the applications for hotel motel tax grant funds. Each year from that fund, we allocate an amount, this year it was 34,000 budgeted, for programs and events that help bring tourism to the city and/or attract overnight stays in accordance with the state statute. There were four applications that were received by the initial deadline and what we do is we, I score them based on a preset criteria based on the application. We also have Sunil Grant and the Economic Development Coordinator score them. We discuss the results, address any discrepancies that there might be. You have the results of that scoring before you. We'll probably have to take a motion on each one individually, but let's go through them and I'll give my recommendation based on the scoring packets. The first one is Elite Striders for $7,000 and I would recommend approval not to exceed $7,000 to be used for the marketing only as detailed in the application.
I'll make a motion that we approve this grant from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Director Nabel?
The second one is Camber, it's the Chicago, I think that was the name for Chicago area metropolitan bikers, I believe. And I apologize if I'm destroying that. But they requested 2,500 and the event sounds like a fantastic event for the city. They were the group that did actually the renovations and regrading and signage of the Buell Park trails. And it does coincide with the goal of the Hotel Motel Tax Program. However, based on the application that was submitted, there were some items that needed to be addressed and we will be discussing those with them. But based on that, we would recommend denial at this time in the initial window. What happens is the budgeted items, we have 34,000 budgeted, we have an initial approval process that we're going through here now, that doesn't preclude anyone from coming along during the rest of the year. It's basically first come, first served on the first round. They can resubmit, we can reconsider based on the items that are addressed in the application.
Is there anyone from Camber in the council chamber right now?
Yeah.
So is this sponsored by the bike shop?
We're part of it. We, it's a bicycle race basically in Buell Park. We're trying to promote, we did one last year, the very first one, and had a very good turnout. It was about 60 racers. A lot of people came out to watch and what we like to do is spread the word larger this time.
Yeah, I thought it was a very successful event.
It was great.
It brought people from all over.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, I see that they scored low on our checklist here. Is that the reason for denial, basically?
Right, we basically have to have a consistent way so there's no bias, no, of scoring this. We set up the application with the questions and everything. Again, I think it's a good event, but based on the same scoring criteria that we use for everyone else, that's why, again, it's a recommendation, you can still approve it.
And it's my understanding, as I look at the application and I look at the scoring, is that the, that the issues on the scoring sheet were simply not addressed. If they were addressed, I'm sure that they would give funding. Do you know the score that you got on this?
I have no idea.
Okay, yeah, yeah, well, we, it's a, it's a, it's a process and we have, there are, this year there are fewer applications, but we get, we've had applications in the past that are coming, that people want us to put physical improvements to buildings on private property.
Correct.
And so we've established a criteria so that everyone is asked the same question. And I just think if you sit down with Sunil or David, I think this is a great event. And this brings back to me, I, I see it as the, like the bike races used to be behind the, between the pool and the, and the leisure center when there were hundreds of people out there racing. And I just think, I see in three or four years that this could be a huge and really cool event for the city, so.
From my understanding, that we're only supposed to use the money for marketing and for promotional purposes.
That's correct.
And that's all we're really asking them for, and that's what I applied for on the applications, was to just use for print ads and radio ads.
Don't know the questions that we're asking them?
Yeah, there's a, there's a grant application that asks very specific questions on that.
Okay.
So the goal would be to go through, go over those items over the next couple of weeks, bring it back on the August 1st, making sure that...
I mean, some of these things, I'm sure you could easily...
Right. But we can't make assumptions that those questions, that what answers those questions...
I suppose my issue with the event happens and the...
Like was contact information provided?
The marketing, the course is for us.
We can do this in two weeks.
So can this be tabled until they have a chance to review the deficiencies?
I'm expecting them to be back, we'll be doing this two weeks from now.
Okay.
So we could table it rather than deny.
You can put that in the form of a motion, Commissioner, to continue the consideration of the application to the August 1st meeting.
That's my motion. A second then? You have a motion and a second. Yeah, I don't think the intent was ever to turn this down. It was just that, that we have a score sheet and if somebody who didn't get funded said, I want to see all the other score sheets, and we show it to them and yours isn't filled out, we're, you know, we, then we have trouble. Just to give you an example, was contact information provided? No. So, I mean, that, you got a negative check there, but I'm sure that you could provide that.
Yeah, it's, it's... You do not answer multiple.
Right.
Okay.
So, anyway.
There's a motion to continue this August 1st.
There's a motion to table till the first meeting in August. And a second, is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Director Nabel?
The next one you have is the Potawatomi Trails Power. All the details are, again, they're in their 24th year here. The details are there. We recommend, the request is 6,500 and we recommend approval not to exceed 6,500 for marketing as, marketing only as presented in the application.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request for the Potawatomi Trails. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. And the last one is the Zion Historical Society requesting 5,000 and we recommend approval not to exceed 5,000 for marketing and promotional materials as presented in the application.
A motion? I highly recommend that we approve this, but I am on the Historical Society Board, so I'm going to recuse myself from voting on this matter. I'll make the motion to approve. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Present.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. I would like to just make the comment that I think these four applications are absolutely incredible. I think you look at the variety of things that people are bringing to the community and a lot of these are new. And I just think it's great in this, the historical societies, Commissioner, would you like to explain what that is, just so people are aware?
We've got some representatives.
I mean, it is, it is really, it is really cool. Would somebody come up and, and use the opportunity to let people know what you're going to do?
31 yeses, 11 no.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. What we're hoping to do is do a cemetery walk like Walt Keegan does, but we're going to call it a walk through time. So this year it'll be out at Mount Olivet. Next year it could be at Lake Mound or it could be something else. Every year we hope to do some type of historical thing to bring people into the City of Zion to show them how great we are and what our history is all about. It doesn't have to, it isn't always going to be about Dowey and the beginning of the city. It could be about the Dudenst Theater and one year we might have a big movie thing. We don't know what that'll be at this point, but this year it's going to be a cemetery walk. It's going to start at the Historical Society. People will park there, they'll be bused out to Mount Olivet. They'll be greeted by John Alexander and there's going to be five gravestones that they're going to go to. There'll be somebody representing the person that's there in each area. And then we're going to have a table that's going to have all kinds of information from the Historical Society and hopefully the City of Zion on what our activities are within the City of Zion. We've got little welcome packets for everybody and history of the city, of the house, of the town. So thank you for your approval.
Well, thank you for, for putting this together.
To people be in, in character, in costume, and portraying these historical characters. And we have something, if you look at Dowey's picture over there, John Alexander Dowey, there's actually somebody in town that looks exactly like that.
And he's going to dress, he's going to dress like that, too, I think.
This tour will be during the day, I hope.
Yeah. [laughter]
Thank you. from the Nuclear Waste Storage Compensation Project for Mayor Hill. I have a memo from Director Nabel in front of me, and it says, "We have been working with Scott Nemenech and Kleinfarth and Jenkins on getting legislation passed relating to the nuclear spent fuel rods stored in the city's boundaries. The council previously approved a cap of 75 hours for this subject, and we have reached and now exceeded that cap. The taxing bodies that are participating in this have been asked to approve an additional 125 hours, bringing the total to 200 hours. Total cost of this time is shared by the various taxing bodies, and the city share of this time would total approximately $5,000. Staff recommends approval of these additional hours." Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the additional 125 hours.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 11D is consider zoning dock at 17-Z-4 requesting a special use permit to operate a veteran, vetter, veterinarian, I'm having trouble speaking today, veterinary clinic at 4527 Illinois Route 173, as petitioned by Dr. Gray for Director Ianson. Planning and zoning commission recommend, recommends approval.
Thank you, Your Honor. Dr. Gray has been serving our community for the past 19 years as a veterinarian. She's requesting a special use permit to open a veterinary clinic located at 4527 Route 173. She will not be boarding animals at this location. Accommodation for overnight stay due to surgery may be necessary. There's a green space at north of the building for when necessary to walk the animals. Staff will be monitoring and maintaining the grounds. Our operation will be Monday, 8 to 6 walk-in, Tuesday, 8 to 7 walk-in, Wednesday through Friday, 8 to 6, and Saturday, 8 to 2 by appointment. At the July 6, 2017 planning zoning meeting, they voted to approve the special use permit. Dr. Gray is with us in the audience at the council as our question.
Is there a motion?
So moved to approve the special use permit?
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 11E, now I have to be careful if I'm having trouble speaking today. Consider approval of mass prophylaxis distribution plan for Chief Lewis.
Thank you, Your Honor. You did a very good job there. You have before you a plan that really all it does is mimic the Lake County Health Department's Plan for Mass Prophylaxis Distribution of Medications. So back in 2010, actually a few years before that, what the Health Department would do is mass distribute meds for city employees at each fire station. And in the event of a distribution of medications for an epidemic, pandemic, or whatever happens, what the county does is they deliver meds to different polling places within the township. Our township being contiguous to the city. They deliver it to our city's public works. Public works delivers it to each of the polling places, and it's delivered to the community. Because of expiration dates and other storage issues, the Health Department is now taking the meds out of the stations and put them down at the county Health Department for the meds. So basically what you have is a housekeeping measure here. We basically take the county's plan, and just knowing how plans work, I cleaned it up a little bit, put it in a little, what I call a dummy-down version, so that any city employee at any point in the next one to 10 years can pick this up and know what to do.
Any city commissioners or, or included in, in mayors?
Luckily you're out of this one. It's all public works, police, and fire in this case.
Okay.
So I'm just asking for approval of this plan at this point.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the prophylaxis distribution plan.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion?
Just the, the applications for the, the distribution in the polling places. Some of those, the, the addresses, the contact information, I just am noting that some of these people are no longer in these positions.
Yeah, unfortunately I can't change that because this is the data that the Health Department has. And then the Health Department only goes over data they receive.
But it's wrong.
I know it's wrong, and I've told them it's wrong, and that's the version I get. This is what they're given. So some of them have been changed. A couple that we've changed, they know. But others, I can't change it because it's their documentation.
Yeah, I also want to make note that the, I don't think Lakeview School is considered a polling place anymore.
Well, I've been told that, too, and when I went back to the Health Department, they, they've never been notified that the Park District Leisure Center is a new polling place and to replace Lakeview School. So...
Why can't we get it corrected?
Because it has to come from the electoral or the polling to the Health Department because we're not, all I can say is that's not right. But I can't legally say change it.
So I take it probably the county court has to notify them that it's going to change. Can you initiate that?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number 12 is departmental commentary. Chief?
I just ask that everybody in here keep in mind the family of Henry Saylor. Henry was one of our longtime ESDA members. He passed away last Saturday from a chronic illness.